Good evening, Eileen. Can you please open up the meeting?
Howell Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, April 22nd, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be opened, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and a decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor is excused tonight. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Scottson.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
He's somewheres around.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kelly, would you please swear in the professionals?
Thank you. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about giving this matter as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name for the record.
Charles Conliffe.
Jennifer Beam.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, approval of minutes, regular meeting, 26th February, 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, and Sayah. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Hughes.
I'll second that.
Ryan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Eileen, any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence tonight.
Okay. Moving on to item eight. There are three resolutions. Case number BA 23-13. Davides Marazinkis. Resolution granting bulk variance approval. Eligible voters: Barillo, Hughes, Mertens, Ryan, Scottson, and Sayah. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Ryan?
A second.
Barillo, second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Case number BA 13-15A-2, GF United. Resolution granting amended conditional use and amended site plan approval. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Orozco, Mertens, Ryan, and Sayah. Motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion.
Second.
We got a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Case number BA 23-10, Royalty 19 LLC. Resolution granting use variance and final site plan approval. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Orozco, Ryan, and Sayah. Roll call.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have the Vice Chair and the Secretary. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you, Eileen. Applications before the board. Case number BA 22-07 Alpha, Keystone Novelty Distributors LLC. Type is a temporary use permit. And the description: Application of Keystone Novelty Distributors LLC as applicant and 1175 Route 33, Felix Bruleski Route 70 Properties as owner seeking a temporary use permit to allow a tent on the property to sell. New Jersey legal sparkling devices from June 21, 2024, to July 6, 2024, and from June 21, 2025, to July 6, 2025, on premises known as Block 135, Lot 15.01, 2400, U.S. Highway 9 South. Expiration date: July 13, 2024.
Oh, good evening, members of the board. Timothy Middleton, on behalf of the applicant, good to see you. I think we can make this quick. Mr. May is to my right, to your left. He can be sworn in and just go through the testimony.
Okay.
You raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony of your back to giving this matter as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State and spell your name for the record, please.
John May. J-O-H-N, N-A-Y.
He's sworn.
Mr. May, you're the applicant, or you represent, you're part of the applicant in terms of ownership, correct?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the application?
Yes.
And you were here, I believe, approximately two years ago. Since you were the same location, same application?
We were here at this location with the same setup for the past two years without incident. Four years before that, we were at Howell Lanes without incident. This is a renewal for another two years. We have authorization from the landowner to occupy the premises for the next two years as well.
There's some issues in the review letter I want to go through. One, has there been any issues whatsoever in the last four years at any locations here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Provide testimony regarding the security during the evenings.
The, we have 24-hour security at the location. At all of our locations in New Jersey, we operate about 35 of these types of sales in New Jersey and about 400 of these throughout the Northeast. We're serious about what we do, and our goal is to not get a phone call from the township, from the landlord, or from anyone during our sale.
So what does that security entail? I mean, I think that's kind of what the question is. It's like, what do you do to provide 24-hour security?
Somebody is on-site at all times.
Is the inventory you're going to be selling the same as what you represented to the board in 2022?
It's the same inventory. It's the same material, sparkler products that are sold in Walmart and other mass merchandising stores.
And it complies with the New Jersey law?
Yes.
Are there any freestanding signs, wind flags, or tent mannequin signs proposed?
We have signs that are affixed to the tent. We can provide a sample of those if necessary. It's the same signs that we have been using for the past six years.
Again, without issue?
Without issue.
And are you going to comply with the Township Fire Code and the New Jersey regulations?
We operate compliant with NFPA 1124, which sets out the width of the aisles within the tent, where fire extinguishers are placed, the type of signage that's necessary, including no smoking, and the like. So yes, we'll be compliant with the New Jersey law for the sale of sparklers.
And my understanding is the hours of operation is 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily?
Yes, with, as we get closer to July 4th, typically on July 2nd or 3rd, we close at about 11 o'clock.
Okay. How about on the 4th?
On the 4th, usually it closes a little bit earlier than 11:00. We'll sell as long as we can if people are interested in buying, but usually we're closed by 10:00.
And you're going to be clear from the site by July 10th?
Yes.
And you have no smoking signs as you enter or exit?
We have no smoking signs inside throughout, and as you enter, compliant with NFPA 1124, there is a large sign that says "No Smoking" and "No Fireworks Discharged Within 300 Feet." Our operators are educated that no sparkling devices are set off on the property at all. Under no circumstances should they be set off, and generally, our operators are compliant with that.
Mr. Chair, I just want to jump in for one hot second. They said they're going to comply with what was previously granted. What was previously granted was on July 3rd and 4th, 10:30, not 11 o'clock. So that was not 11 o'clock, it was 10:30. And operations will cease on the 6th? Is that correct?
Yes.
And then you'll clear everything out by the 10th?
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to be clear on that, that there will be no more sales after the 6th, and everything will be cleared by the 10th.
Thank you.
And we'll shut down at 10:30 if that's necessary.
I have no further questions.
Okay.
So, and I'll just sum it up, right? So, they were here years ago. They got a two-year temporary use permit at Howell Lanes. They came back on another two-year extension. That's the end of what's permitted in the code. They came, I think, for another site up on Route 33, Petroleum 19. They got a two-year permit there. That site's since been redeveloped, so that's what prompted them to come to this site. All the stuff and questions in my letter are basically a reiteration of every single time. And just so the board knows, we don't actually issue the temporary use permit. The governing body does that. We're just making a recommendation. They've got their two-year permit. It's set to expire. We can make a recommendation for a maximum extension of an additional two-year permit. So, like I said, the governing body will issue any additional things and findings in their resolution of the temporary use permit, but I tried to restate them in my letter, so they put testimony on the record.
Got it. Thank you, Charlie. John?
No issues with this application.
Great. Board members, any questions? My only question, this is the one, this permit that you're seeking is for Route 9 South, right next to Ice Cream on 9, I guess, up in that area?
Yeah, this is the Howell Center Shopping Center. We recently saw, they came in to redo their sign within the last two years, so it's that shopping center. It's, I think, north or south of White Street, and yeah, real close to the.
Christie's.
Okay, got it, yes.
And they're the easternmost parking bays, you know, right along the Route 9 frontage there.
Got it. Okay, so.
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. May, you said employees are trained, trained. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, we have an online training program. It's about an hour and a half. Operators, in order to be permitted to operate a sale for us, has to pass with a score of 80 or above. It's a 20-question assessment at the end of the hour-and-a-half training program. It includes some safety training as well as operations training.
Can you be a little more specific? Anything to do with, like, fire suppression? Like, what are we talking?
It does. So, the safety component of it is what they need to be mindful about transporting the sparkler products. It includes safe use of a fire extinguisher, what to do in inclement weather, those sorts of things.
John, is there inspections during the timeframe that they're open?
Not by code enforcement. The Fire Bureau may conduct inspections with regards to their code, which is being enforced here.
So, and just to add to that, too. So, in the resolution last year that they got from the governing body authorizing temporary use permit, they were required to get a Type 1 permit from the Fire Bureau as part of the resolution body's approval. And then regarding the signage, in the resolution, it specifically said, like, do not use within 300 feet of the tent and things like that. So, you know, there's additional safeguards, and I believe they have a fire extinguisher in the tent as well, or multiple fire extinguishers in the tent as well.
That's right. We have two fire extinguishers in every tent, and the New Jersey law was updated. We now require a Type 2 permit. It's basically the same as Type 1, but a little more expensive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Out of curiosity, is the security the same staff that is selling during the day?
Often it's not.
I know. The only reason I ask, I'm not saying it was your location. It wasn't. But I have happened to walk into one of these, and I guess the nighttime security was sleeping inside the tent on air mattresses next to the fireworks, so I was just curious.
Yeah, often it's not.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Iger.
Mr. May, is inventory replenished during the course of your stay there?
I hope so. In the better-performing locations, we have inventory replenishment that comes in.
And how is that delivered?
Our freight carrier is APF. They're a hazmat-certified freight carrier, and it's typically delivered directly to the tent location, just as the initial delivery is made. Just in order of magnitude, there's two pallets of product delivered when the tents open, and if a tent's doing well, we might have another single pallet delivered late June.
Thank you.
Okay. So, what's the pleasure of the board? This is a use permit that we would be recommending to the governing body to issue, to this applicant. Kelly, do we need to vote on that?
Yes, I think what you're looking for is a motion for a recommendation, and if you want to include any additional conditions, or if you just want to state the prior, you know, the same prior conditions, and then a vote.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion for a vote for a recommendation.
Okay, with all the conditions.
With all the previously existing conditions.
And the new.
And any new stipulations.
Yes, okay.
I'll second that, sir.
Okay, we got a motion, and we got a second. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Orozco.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Middleton. Have a great day, guys. Good luck.
Good luck. Hopefully you'll be buying stuff.
Okay. Next application up in front of the board, case number BA 23-11, Christ Church of Howell. This is a use variance with preliminary and final site plan approval. Description: Application of Christ Church of Howell as applicant and owner seeking use variance in preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a one-story, 22,185-foot square foot addition to the existing house of worship and a new one-story, 1,635-square-foot maintenance building with associated parking, stormwater management, and other site improvements on premises known as Block 66, Lots 36.17, 71 Oak Glen Road. This application was partially heard on March 11, 2024. Expiration date: May 2, 2024. Sir.
Good evening. Richard Scari, Helen Neiman Wright, on behalf of Christ Church of Howell. As Chairman stated, we began with the application on March 11. We finished about half of it. We're here to hopefully finish the rest of it. We have three witnesses that I'll call: our traffic expert, our architect, and our planner. So unless the board has any questions, we're ready to continue.
Mr. Chair, I would just request, we requested that the applicant submit a detailed statement of operations, and so you're going to need to bring someone back to.
We did.
I know that, but we have questions about it. So, somebody's going to need to come back up and address the questions regarding the statement of operations.
Yes, we have the person here that testified before, and if you'd like her to testify first to answer your questions, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
That would work, sir.
That would be great. Yeah, I can bring her back up. I apologize and realize you were going that way. All right, so we can start with Ms. Antoinette Addison.
Welcome back, ma'am.
And she was sworn at the prior hearing, so you continue to be under oath, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
So, the statement of operations. Jen, you have that?
I do have it, and I have a couple of questions about it.
Okay.
So, the first, like, going through, you're saying the hours of operation are 8:30 to 11:30 a.m., but then it's like, these hours will change if we go to multiple services in the sanctuary. That's something that we're going to need to know, because you're here because you don't comply with the parking, and if you have two services back-to-back, there's going to be overlap in the parking requirement, and therefore, could be problematic. We do not want cars along the side of Oak Glen Road, so, you know, I understand you'd like flexibility, but we're going to need to know a little bit more detail on, are you, I mean, given what I've looked at in terms of your congregation and the attendance, is there a need for additional services?
It is not, but I just wanted to state, if the church grew to that, then what we would do is we would put additional time in between to give time for leaving and then additional service for later.
So I think that.
Nothing happening back-to-back.
Should that happen, they're going to have to come back and explain how that's going to work.
That's fine. I mean, if there's a condition that needs to be put in as to that, we would agree.
Just because we don't know how many services, what the gap in time is going to be, if there's overlap, they already are deficient on their parking, which is why they're here before us versus at the planning board. There's nowhere to overflow on Oak Glen Road, so if at some point in the future you get to that point, I think that they should come back and just explain that to the board. That's not something that I feel the town should do administratively. Secondly, the hours of operation for the studio, and the answer is, its intended purpose is not for rental.
Correct.
Okay, so, I don't like the language. It's not for rental. The intention is problematic, because your intention could change. So, if you're not going to rent it, the condition will be, it is not for rent.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
Yes.
And then, I need to, so, I'm struggling. I understand the food pantry. I mean, my office is literally across the street from fulfill, so I know exactly how that operates. They were just before the Neptune Board. How is that going to work? Because I can tell you, in the months leading up to Thanksgiving and Christmas, the traffic leading out of fulfill backs up Route 66 for at least a mile. So, I need to understand how exactly that food pantry is going to work? Are you, like, how are the deliveries going to be made? How frequently deliveries are going to be made? How many people are going to be using that food pantry? Because I could tell you, it's a major traffic hazard on Route 66 at fulfill, and they just came back into the board and I think were a little shocked at the reception that they received, because it's dangerous. So, how exactly is that food pantry going to operate?
It operates once a month. Delivery is on Friday, so it's not the same day. It's on Friday, delivery. And it's from the hours of 9:00 to 11:00, or 9:00 to 12:00. 9:00 to 12:00, they're wrapping up.
Do people come by appointment?
No.
How many families do you serve?
Presently, we have 56, but it varies, because it's, sometimes it drops from that, sometimes it adds that, but we've not gone over, and that's during the holidays, on Thanksgiving and things of that sort. What we've done is, is that we expand the days, so that, in other words, instead of having it just that once a month, we will do it the week before as well as, so it expands the time, so it's not that full. But typically, except for Thanksgiving, it's once a month. Delivery is Friday, and it's Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00.
So, what I would like to see, should the board act favorably on the application, is a queue plan for how the families come in, pick up their food, and how they go out, because.
They're going to be.
I need a queue plan to show, because generally, they don't get, like, they're not there on-site for a very long period of time, but the queue, depending on how it's queued, could theoretically go out onto Oak Glen Road, which could create a not-so-pleasant circumstance. So, I'm not suggesting that it's fatal. It's definitely not, but what we're going to need to see from, if the board acts favorably, is a plan prepared, I see your traffic engineer over there, to show what the queue would be, how they managed to get through the site, how they go out, because I live it. It's a very dangerous situation. I'm not, I think what they're doing is fantastic, but we got to make sure that it doesn't create an unsafe condition.
We do have.
So, can I just call?
I have some things to say about the number.
Okay. Well, maybe after.
After I'm done.
After.
But we do have a setup. I don't know.
I get it. So what I'm saying is that we need you to submit it so that we have it. In the event that, because what will happen is, those residents that live in the neighborhood across the street, if the queuing goes out onto Oak Glen Road, and then it's problematic, and they're getting into being stuck behind traffic, they're going to call John, and he's going to have nothing on paper to say, this is how it's set up. So, we just need you to formally submit that, should the board act in the affirmative regarding the food pantry.
That would be a condition and a queue plan.
Correct. I noticed there, it says, like, for number 15, in the future, we might want to consider a second floor onto the administrative offices. That would also require a return to the board.
Yes. We understand that.
That's all I have on this, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John.
Welcome.
Can I ask something? Mr. Stanton, did you certify to vote for this application before?
I didn't get anything in the mail, but I did watch the video, because I live a half a mile of the street.
Okay, I did email you, but I have the.
I didn't see it. I'm sorry. I will certify down though.
Sorry.
I apologize. I used to get it in the mail.
So.
Is there any more questions for?
Mr. Sherman. We, you know, the premise for the planner, going over the operational statement and the flow of traffic. We've talked last meeting. We're concerned about, of course, the flow on Oak Glen Road, right? There's been, you know, a lot of growth. People do move very quickly. We've got the 195 overpass. They come flying over it in both directions. I've seen accidents there, and what we're trying to do is figure out, through this process, can we improve that situation and make sure that our residents are safe? And, you know, in doing so.
Yes, completely understand, and I'll call after going over the operations, I'll call our traffic expert, and we'll be pulling down, really, specifically, in all those
Yeah, I have nothing else.
John, we're good?
We're good.
Sir, we're good?
Yes, if I can just call Reverend Addison, he might be able to answer maybe a few more of the questions from, from the board planner. I may call up something.
And the reverend was also sworn previously, so you continue to be under oath.
Yes.
Sure, thank you.
So, Reverend, um, just, the board planner had some questions on the statement of operations, is there anything you just wanna clarify or add, so we're fully, you know, we fully explain everything to them?
So, I, I, I don't think that they, we can really compare what we do to fulfill. But Phil, if you've been to their facility, it's a warehouse stacked with shelves and pallets that serve thousands and thousands of people, and that's, and they do a great job. We are a satellite of that. We do thirty to fifty families in a month, and so, when people come to our property, they turn into the driveway, and they queue inside the property right now, and so they don't back up out onto Oakland Road. They queue in the property, and there's a circular driveway there, and we intend to have a similar sort of plan, and they will queue in there, and then they will either make a left or a right out of the property back onto Oakland Road. And so, I, I don't think that it's a fair comparison to compare what we're doing as a satellite for fulfill, compared to what they are doing in Neptune, serving thousands and thousands of families for their benefit. The other concern that I have is the requirement, or the suggestion, to have to come back to the board, because the church grows and wants to go to multiple services. To me, that is something that we meet the needs of the community, and so, we time out in order that people would be able to have parking and be able to come in and out of the property in a reasonable way. One thing I can tell you, if there's not enough parking, people will not come to the church, right? So, there's gotta be enough parking. We have to remember that the sanctuary is not being expanded, and we do not see at any time that we will have full use of the entire property. So, I'd like to reiterate, the multipurpose room, there, there will never be a time, ever, where you will have a wedding, right, or a reception in a multipurpose room and church going on at the same time. It just, it violates our operation, it'll never happen. And so, that means that if we did go to multiple services, the multipurpose room would not be used during any of those times that we go to, you know, to multiple services. And so, the parking would be adequate because of that particular use. And so, I, so I'd like to suggest that, that we would not have to come back to the board for permission to operate the church in a religious fashion to offer more services to our community.
So, I'm gonna respectfully disagree. You're here because you don't comply with your parking requirement, and you're not even close. So, you require three hundred ninety-nine spaces, and you're at two sixty-six. And so, I understand your desire, but I'm not gonna agree to that, because if you go to multiple services and there's overlap, and we don't know what the timing is, et cetera, you don't have enough parking, quite frankly, to satisfy your current parking demand. If you have overlap, it's gonna make the situation worse. We have required any changes of anybody who gets a use variance at any time for any reason to come back to this board to say, "This is what we're changing." So, this is gonna be no exception, this is not special for you, this is what we do for everyone. So, I, I don't agree with that at all. If they change to go to multiple services, they're gonna have to come back and explain it. Secondly, while I can appreciate they're not fulfill, a queue, a queue plan is, is essential, because at the end of the day, that circular driveway's right in the front, it's not super deep into the site, and there's no place for cars to go if it becomes problematic. And I'm not saying it's gonna become problematic, but if it does, it provides the township an opportunity to say, "This is how you said this was gonna function, and now we're gonna reconcile it with what you've represented at the board." So, I understand what you'd like, but I, I do not agree. I think you're here for X, you don't get X plus Y in the event. Like, we've never allowed someone to say, "Well, we're here for this, but maybe we're gonna do this in the future, and we're not gonna have to come back to explain it to you." That has never happened, and I've been working for this board for a very long time. So, I understand your desire, but I don't support it, I apologize.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you, Reverend. Oh, I'm sorry, do the board have any questions for Reverend, or?
Did anybody? I'd like to add something. I live in a neighboring community over there, probably a half a mile up the road. I will tell you, residents, especially my neighbors, complain all the time about on-street parking. Jen's right, you don't wanna wind up in a position where you become public enemy number one because you didn't cover your bases. I routinely have tractor-trailers parked behind my house, guys sleeping, and I'm not saying that's the case with you, but the residents over there are a little up in arms. So, I know it's difficult and it's a stumbling block, but instead of aggravating some neighbors, maybe you're better off just heeding her advice a little bit. That way, you're complying. But I think what you're doing is noble.
Yes, thank you very much, sir. Okay, my next witness is Douglas Polynak, our traffic engineer.
We're gonna need to have Douglas sworn in, and I'd like to have his credentials put on the record, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Before you sit down, do you swear affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please spell your name for the record?
Sure, it's Douglas Polynak. P as in Peter, O-L-Y-N-I-A-K.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Polynak, by whom are you employed?
Uh, yes, I'm a project engineer with Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers located in Somerville, New Jersey.
Okay, and describe what your profession is?
Uh, sure, I'm a traffic engineer by trade and by license. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Lehigh University, I graduated in nineteen ninety-eight. Since that time, I've worked in the field of traffic engineering. Uh, like I said, I've been licensed for about the last twenty years.
Licensed by who, sir?
Uh, as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
In the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've testified before over a hundred municipal planning and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey.
As a traffic engineer?
Correct.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pol-, I'm sorry, is it Polynak?
Polynak.
Polynak.
I'm not even close. Just as it's spelled.
Polynak. Have you reviewed the, uh, the board professionals, engineers, and the planners' letters?
I have.
And did you also prepare a traffic impact analysis in support of the application we're here for today?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And can you describe in detail your traffic impact analysis, just talking about all your findings concerning the traffic issues?
Yeah, absolutely. Although, as you heard from prior testimony from the church representatives, there's a substantial traffic increase, it's not anticipated, because the church and the expansion will not be in operations at the same time, our office prepared a pretty extensive traffic impact analysis dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three for that expansion. Just to reiterate some of the engineering testimony, from a traffic perspective, as part of the project, the access that exists there today on Oakland Road will remain as-is today, it's located between Donella Way and Maxim Road. As you heard, there'll be no increase in, in seats within the sanctuary, but the expansion will be used for religious classes, events, the food pantry that was recently discussed, with no additional population during those services. However, we did perform an analysis, and we reviewed the existing volumes and traffic patterns that currently occur at the church during services on Sundays. We did traffic counts out there last April in two thousand twenty-three, and we counted from nine fifteen in the morning to twelve fifteen in the afternoon, to incorporate both the arrival and departure timeframes associated with the services. We counted Oakland Road, the church access, and Donella Way, the northern way. We found that the church arrival peak hour, as traffic engineers, we typically look at peak hours, occurred from nine fifteen to ten fifteen. During that timeframe, sixty visitors arrived, and there was one exiting movement. For the departure period post-services, as you can imagine, it was the opposite of that, with three entering and sixty-nine exiting vehicles in that hour. The two-way traffic along Oakland Road was approximately a hundred eighty vehicles to two hundred forty vehicles over the course of those hours. And then what we did is, we used a, a software to analyze intersection movements to calculate delay for turning movements at locations, so we did that analysis for the church driveway, as well as for the Donella Way leg, that's to the north of the church driveway. And you've probably heard from prior traffic testimony, it's similar to a report card, with A being exceptional, very limited delay for turning movements, where an F is at capacity, where things are constrained. For this analysis, for the most, uh, arrival and departure peak hours, levels of service at Donella Way and the church access are operating at level service B, demonstrating that there's very little delay out there and things are operating relatively smoothly. As, reiterating again, there's no appreciable increase anticipated during these arrival and departure peak periods associated with the church. There may be a little bit of an earlier arrival for people to use some of the new features prior to services, and some may stay later afterwards, whether it be to have a refreshment or to talk or to have a, you know, potential discussions or classes or some outside just to hang out, but it's not gonna really increase traffic, it may just extend the duration of the people that are on the property. However, to perform a extremely conservative future analysis, what we did is, we increased the existing church traffic by, proportionally associated with the square footage and building, and that's like over three times the amount of traffic that would be there today, so we multiplied that traffic that was existing there today by three, and we also combined the arrival and departure peak hours to really say, what if, what if the traffic there is now is associated with the building expansion, and what if everybody's only there for an hour? So, they all arrive in one hour and they all leave in one hour, which is never gonna happen, but we wanted to see and make sure that there was sufficient capacity at the driveway, as well as Donella Way, to make sure that there wasn't much of an impact. So, when we did an analysis of those volumes, we found that the movements at the driveway and Donella Way will operate at level service C. So, there's a slight degradation in delay, however, it's under a condition that's extremely conservative, demonstrating that there's more than sufficient roadway capacity to handle quite a bit of expansion on-site during those Sunday peak hours when services are occurring. I also reviewed the site plan with respect to the access, the overall site circulation, and the parking supply, which we've heard is a concern. Like I said, the access will remain as-is today, will lead to minimum twenty-five-foot two-way aisles, those will serve parking spaces that are dimensioned nine feet wide by nineteen feet deep. All these dimensions meet standard engineering practices and should provide more than efficient flow two-way throughout the site. There's, you know, in some instances, there's thirty-foot drive aisles providing a lot of maneuverability for parishioners. Site currently has a hundred thirty-two parking spaces, another a hundred twenty-three are proposed, for a total of two hundred fifty-five physical spaces on-site. There will be EV stations or locations which allow for a credit of another eleven spaces, so that total comes to two hundred sixty-six spaces provided. Now, based on the ordinance, and that's why we're here, parking is calculated two ways. One way is regarding the number of seats, and the other way is regarding the maximum person's occupancy on-site. And obviously, with a large expansion in building, the potential occupancy increases, so when you calculate the parking requirement based on seats at one per four seats, ninety-five spaces are required. However, when you apply it to that occupancy, that's where we get that three hundred ninety-nine spaces, but that truly will never happen, only because none of the, or the totality of the structures on-site are gonna be occupied by people at the same time. You either have them in the sanctuary or in the new expansion, but never both. So, whenever, that demand of three ninety-nine is extremely conservative. We also looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, and for a three hundred and eighty-seat sanctuary, they recommend eighty-four spaces, and our office also, when we were out there doing the traffic counts and parking counts, and found that, excuse me, found that, I think it was, I just lost my spot, I think it was, I'm sorry, it was eighty-eight spaces occupied during our counts, the Institute of Transportation Engineers recommends ninety-five, sorry about that. So, the ninety-five and the eighty-eight that are recommended by IT in our accounts kind of go in line with the spaces required by the ordinance based on seats. So, overall, based on the anticipated and existing operations, based on the ordinance based on seats, as well as our observations, I, I think that the two hundred and fifty-five physical spaces on-site should be more than sufficient to accommodate the existing services that are occurring now, obviously, as well as any potential expansion in use or post-service use, or even potentially any religious ceremony.
Just a couple points on the board planner's letter, if I can refer to that. Section sixty, the board planner requests testimony concerning, concerning certain uses of the site, also talks about overall site circulation, so if you haven't already, can you talk about the overall site circulation on the site?
Excuse me, yeah, like I had, had said, the dimensions that are provided on the site for the parking stalls, as well as the aisles, meet and sometimes in some places exceed some common standards with respect to aisle widths and parking stalls, so I fully anticipate site circulation being efficient throughout the site.
Can you give us those dimensions?
Uh, for the site, it was nine-foot wide spaces with nineteen feet in depth.
Is it drive aisle?
Yeah, there's a minimum drive aisle of twenty-five feet, in some locations, I believe towards the rear of the building, they increased to thirty, but the minimum's twenty-five.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe you testified about the, also the board planner requesting testimony anticipated traffic demand. Do you have anything else to add besides what you testified to concerning anticipated traffic demand?
Yeah, no, all I can add is that I think we've pretty conservatively analyzed what occurs at the church, or could potentially occur, or won't necessarily occur at the church on Sunday peak hour. I think throughout the operational outline provided by the applicant, there may be some instances where there's some traffic associated with a, a couple uses that are minimal, I think there was a children's class of twenty-five that could occur on Friday's camp-type item. Nothing that's a very large increase in traffic during those hours, and most often occur outside of your standard four to six p.m. peak hours.
Okay. And also, at the previous hearing, when we had the testimony of our engineer, there was discussion about adding a crosswalk for pedestrians that cross from the adjacent neighborhood, and I think there was discussion as to the location of that, and there was a suggestion that the crosswalk be located in Donella Way, and that's also a little further from the driveway. But can you state, or testify as to any discussions about the appropriate location for the crosswalk? For his location, I know there's the bridge over one ninety-five there, but can you provide some testimony if the applicant were required to put, um, put in a crosswalk, where the best location that would be?
Yeah, I, I did look at that when I was approached with the board's concern. Looking at the intersections of Donella Way with Oakland Road, as well as the church driveway intersection, both of them have some ADA ramps at the corners and sidewalk provided. The church has sidewalk on the southerly side, so a, a, a crosswalk would most likely be at that location. The Donella Way crosswalk, if, if it was located at that location, would be probably on the southern side as well. But when I looked a little deeper into those two locations, we had some mention of the one ninety-five bridge, there's a certain curvature when you're coming from the south, from the north-southbound, that kind of has you creep up upon Donella Way. Speed limit's forty-five miles per hour, there is some growth on the easterly side of the roadway, so I think by providing a crosswalk further to the south at the church driveway gives you another hundred, maybe even closer to a hundred fifty feet of sightline for a vehicle traveling southbound. So, I, I'd prefer it to be at that location, because it provides additional sightline. Coming down south on, on Oakland, Donella does come up quickly, and if you're, you know, on that curve, you can't really see the person that may be using the crosswalk on the easterly side of Oakland Road. But once you get around that curve and you get approached Donella, you could, you could certainly see the church driveway much better. Yeah, if you-
Charlie?
Yeah, so, typically municipalities, county entities don't prefer mid-block crossings, so what they'd be proposing, so you're saying from the site driveway, you've got sidewalk coming down the site driveway, two pads at your site driveway, you're talking about crossing over from the southerly pad right across over to the west side of Oakland Road?
Yeah, that's correct. If you spin that around, you get a good view.
So, in normal instances, I would make a recommendation that they run the sidewalk up the east side of the road and come right across and tie into Donella Way. up the east side of the road and come right across and tie into Donella Way. I recognize the proximity to coming off of Oakland Road...
And the speed, yes.
And the speed. I think even if the crosswalk is installed at their site drive coming across, they should also get sign off from the township engineering department that they find that acceptable, and they're going to need to put some like pedestrian crossing advanced signs like in accordance with MUTCD, you know, the sign at the crosswalk and then 150, 300 feet.
The overpass.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be before the overpass, but like coming over the overpass before you get to Donella Way, whatever's compliant with MUTCD, they need to put the advanced signage, just letting people know there's a crosswalk.
Charlie, you know, townships install, you know, push buttons on both sides, right, where there're blinking light and slow down, you know, pedestrian crossing, that type of stuff.
You know, certainly it's a use variance application, it's within your right to request, you know, reasonable conditions of approval if you think that, you know, you're particularly concerned about pedestrians safer crossing the street. They do make solar-mounted, you know, panels for the light type of pedestrian crossing signs that still are activated by a push button. You know, there's a cost obviously associated with those, you know, that's, as the board knows, we don't weigh that as any consideration on land use applications, but it's something certainly that I think is reasonable. I think you could probably also overkill it with standard MUTCD signage, you know, 150, 300 feet, both approaches to that, and, you know, get a somewhat, you know, similar effectiveness out of it. Ideally, you'd put it at the township's intersection because it's a street, not a driveway, and there's regular traffic out of street entranceways.
So if you did it at Maxim Southern, Maxim Road there...
No, they're talking about doing it at their driveway.
At their driveway.
Yeah.
But if we went further south...
But there's no sidewalk on their side of the street.
Exactly.
Yeah, they'd have to run sidewalk down...
They have no sidewalk on their side of the street at all.
I think also it's a very long distance from the driveway to the Maxim.
And their property line doesn't go all the way to Maxim Road.
Right.
You know, you are going to have to obviously seek the sidewalk waiver, and you're going to have to pay into the sidewalk fund, and this board has absolutely zero opportunity to waive that fee, that's outside of their purview.
Right, well, obviously, we would do the crosswalk, we're just trying to think of the best safest way.
Right, I would suggest, okay, so first of all, we're here for a use variance, so there's going to be a negative criteria conversation that's going to come up with respect to the, to the application, and at the end of the day, I drive there on the way home on the regular, and you come over that overpass, and there's literally no time, if you don't know someone's in that crosswalk, by the time you come over that overpass, you are hitting them. There is no doubt in my mind, there is going to have to be some kind of an advanced notification because otherwise, you're inviting people to get hit by cars. I would never encourage someone to cross the street, it's especially mid-block, which is more dangerous than at an intersection, but there is going to have to be some kind of advanced notification to let someone know as they're approaching that overpass that there's someone in that crosswalk, that they press the button and it will notify them that it's coming, because otherwise, you're either going to have cars veering off into the woods or you're going to have cars hitting pedestrians.
Again, that's why, that's why our thought was to push it back, even though it's not ideal and it's mid-driveway, it just, our thought was giving, you know, a little extra time and an extra site, but we would, obviously, whoever the board recommends, we would comply with.
I mean, it's a better condition than at the Donella Way because it gives you more notice, but it doesn't change my opinion on the advanced warning because you come, you come across that driveway very quickly.
Right.
And I get it's a 45 mile an hour speed limit, but I would defy you to find one single person that drives 45.
I don't disagree that something has to be put further up, there's no question, but having it closer to their driveway, I think is the safest, to me, would be the safest place.
Yes, farther away from that overpass.
Exactly, so at least it's giving it an opportunity to slow down and deal with it.
I'm sorry, did you want to add to the...
Yeah, I was just saying, I think it was the board's intention to provide a crosswalk to assist the residents that live nearby to get to the church, which I assume if their parishioners would occur now, and I think providing a crosswalk at that location is a much improved safety manner, including gen signage, and like I said, we could work with their professionals for certainly the required MUTC signing and striping, you know, it's going to have to be high visibility crosswalk at that location, and the, you know, bright green signs with the pictures of the pedestrians and arrows, and whatever other features may be necessary.
I just got a couple more questions just before we hop off. So I think in the traffic report, there was a mention of southbound left turn lane along Oakland Road at the site drive may be necessary to maintain safe and efficient access to Donella Way. Can you talk about that statement? Is that in the existing condition? Is that your three times the current occupancy for the, for the church? What is that recommendation based off of?
No, I did not recommend an exclusive left turn lane to the church. I think there was a comment in one of the review letters asking us to look into that.
Okay.
We looked at, we have, when we did our traffic counts, we had a video recording of the intersection, and I observed the counts as they proceeded, and currently, there actually wasn't an instance of someone making a left turn into the church during services and a car bypassing, but understand that absolutely will happen. But that southbound approach with the shoulder and the, and the lane, it's about 20 feet, so there is sufficient width for a left-turning vehicle to be bypassed by another car if that confluence of those two movements occurred.
I apologize, that's, I missed it, that's a comment in my letter, but there was questions about circulation coming into the site driveway. So I think maybe as a condition of the approval, you know, the whole roundabout in the front and then the parking kind of coming off that, maybe some additional signage just for circulation might be helpful, especially if the church is growing, you know, on the Easter holidays and things like that, just so that way you don't get a queuing building up, or if there's a designated loading area, people going to park versus loading, it's just clear, so that way you hopefully don't get the queue going onto Oakland Road backing up, you know, traffic onto Oakland Road.
Can I ask a quick question? So does the church currently utilize any sort of safety people, like people outside that might wave folks around during some of your bigger services?
I would have to call, I can have the reverend come up if you want an answer, if that's okay. You want to come up? No? You go with the...
So for Easter and Christmas, there have been times that we have hired a police officer for safety, not necessarily for traffic. We do have some traffic personnel from time to time that wear safety vests and would direct traffic as necessary to try to make sure that the flow is there, but currently we have the roundabout, and people know to go to the right and then they can circle all the way around, and it would be a similar outline, similar sort of plan that we have as well for the expansion.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir? You said from time to time, you have traffic people with vests, what, when do you have that? What makes you do that? What would be the circumstance?
Sure. Normally, on holidays, particularly Easter and Christmas, there are a lot of people that don't go to church regularly throughout the year, but Christmas and Easter, most churches do see an influx of people, and so it's typically during those times that we will have people out there helping out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
So Charlie, are we good with the traffic?
Yeah, and the last comment I had was they showed site triangles for the site driveway, and you know, there's obviously vegetation along the frontage there. I would just have a recommendation that like anything along the frontage, just be manicured just to, you know, for pedestrian safety, you know, and everything like that, just make sure we have clear line of sight. You know, it's good showing on a plan, but once you actually see the canopy and things like that, you know, just want to clean it up if we can.
Okay, great. Board members?
Yeah, I have a general question. This might be for the professionals. What about no parking signs on Oakland? Should there be, is that something that we can ask for? Or is there, because I don't know existing, if there are any no parking...
I don't know of any no parking signs on Oakland, but I believe if I'm not mistaken, and I'm sorry if I'm hijacking your question.
No, no.
There's no real shoulder in that section, so people would be parking on the grass. There's a big shoulder up the street, actually directly behind my house, but that section of Oakland doesn't really have any, anywhere somebody sane would park a car.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken.
No, you're right.
So and then, you know, regulating parking in a public right of way, that is not at the, you know, discretion of the board, that's the governing body that regulates that. We could certainly, if the board actually really make a recommendation or have Eileen make a recommendation to the governing body to consider putting no stopping or standing along the frontage, you know...
Yeah, I think I would like to see that, just, you know, at this way, we at least, you know, covered everything.
You have another one?
Yeah, as I'm looking at this, and we're talking about the signage coming off of 195, I'm kind of thinking because of some of the traffic that we get going off Maxim, that we might have to maybe put something past, I forgot whose house that is, but pass there that is going to forewarn maybe just a basic sign noting pedestrian crossing or something on that side too.
Oh, I would recommend in both directions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, MUTCD gives guidance for the placement of signs at the crossing, advanced warning signs based off the speed limits, the characteristic of the road, they can provide as a condition of approval and exhibit, you know, plan demonstrating compliance with MUTCD.
Right, and also to add to that, so, and the board planner recommending or requiring as a condition of approval a queue plan for inside the property, that's something we're able to provide upon the boards.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, just looking at the site plan as it's designed, there's a lot of potential for onsite circulation, so I'm sure we can come up with an appropriate plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I noticed around town, well, one school in particular, I don't remember the name, but it's on Aldridge, heading towards Jackson.
Aldridge School.
Aldridge School, yeah. There's a sign, and it's when flashing speed limit is, is that...
When children are present, yeah.
I mean, is that a possibility?
That's different from...
I know it's different.
I think that's definitely a different standard.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, if you were all done.
Yeah.
Dan, what is your recommendation on where the crosswalk should go? Because I agree with you that Donella creeps up really fast. No one does 45 on Oakland, and it's going to come where you're right, a lot of people are going to be in jeopardy, but I just wanted some clarification on your position.
So I think I agree with the applicant that even though it's obviously not in an ideal situation, preferred to have a mid-block crosswalk, doing it at their driveway gives you at least a little, I mean, the driveway comes up quickly as well, but it gives you a little bit...
You got a little extra time.
Exactly.
I just wanted some clarification, thank you.
And then with all the signage and stuff too, that'll certainly help.
Yeah, but no one does 45 and everybody comes over that bridge quick. I drive that road 30 times a day, back and forth, to Little League, football, whatever, and it's tough.
Charlie, we're good?
Yep.
Thank you. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my next win, this is the architect, Todd Philippi. Thank you. I think we have some slides that don't think they're shown on this.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State and spell your name for the record, please.
Todd Philippi, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-P-I.
Thank you.
Okay.
And give your qualifications.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Philippi, of whom are you employed?
My company is Church Architects LLC, based in Pennsylvania.
Okay, can you describe your profession, please?
Yeah, I'm a registered architect specializing in the design of churches, church facilities, and related ministries, have been doing this for 25 years, licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1998, licensed as an architect since 1987, licensed currently in multiple states.
Where'd you go to school, sir?
Temple University.
Got it, we accept your credentials, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Philippi, did you prepare the architectural plans for the applicant? There were original plans in April 21 and then revised on September 19, 2023.
Yes, my company provided, prepared those plans under my direct supervision.
Okay, and have you reviewed the board engineer and the planners' letters concerning their comments to the application?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and you can just describe, I think you submitted some additional slides, just describe the architectural plans, the basic outline, before we go into more specific questions.
Okay, maybe if we can back up to the first slide, not this one, but the ones before that, that had the floor plan that was submitted as part of the original planning package. Is that that first slide? There you go, yes, this one here. So we were contacted by the church to provide the kinds of support and ancillary facilities that most churches of this size and this attendance would have. Currently, their lobby is very small, if you imagine 380 seats and people coming in and out, you can see the area that's shaded in is the existing building, and they also have minimal offices and classrooms that would typically go along with a congregation of this size. The proposed plan provides a very enlarged lobby, so there's plenty of queuing and hangout space for people, a large multipurpose room that would be used for church banquets, recreational activities, a kitchen to be able to support banquets, and then additional classrooms and expanded office areas. So this is the basic concept that we are working under. We have spreadsheets that give proportions of classrooms and other spaces that should relate to a congregation of certain size, and that spreadsheet was used to come up with the sizes of the spaces that are shown in the plan for the proposed expansion.
Can I just interject, and I don't mean to cut you off, I don't know that anyone really has an issue with like the floor plan, I think the comments in the letters have to do with the facade.
Yes, I wanted to explain the...
I understand, but...
The context of the expansion before going into the images.
Right, wow. So is there anything further, just to give some background or context before the board planner's questions concerning the facade?
No.
Okay, you can go.
So now, if we could go to the images, and if you can go to the first one, so this is an aerial view of the computer model of the design, the design which is in the elevation views that you have received, and we show this view, first of all, to provide the context of the expansion with the existing building, the existing building being on the right side there, that high structure there, that's correct, and you'll notice in this view, there is no steeple on the existing building as exists now, because part of our proposal architecturally is to remove that. We are changing the style, the architectural style of this building to something that is more contemporary and more inviting than the building that was originally constructed. Also point out that the materials that we're proposing, the brick, the synthetic stuccos, are designed to blend in with the existing material. We're proposing to use the same colors, the same brick for the dominant features of the building. You can show the next, next slide. So this view shows the existing church building on the right side with the brick underneath, the stucco above, and then immediately in front of that is the beginning of the addition, that all-brick section there, that's right. You can move to the next slide. On this slide, we have a large glassed area, which is the lobby that is inside of that, and in lieu of the previous steeple, what we have done is we've elevated the center entranceway, making that all glass, and have put a cross on top of it... on top of it. The total structure, including the cross, is beneath the required 50-foot limitation. And then on the left side of that symmetrically is another brick section of the building. So the two of them work together. And then in the background up high is where the multipurpose building is. Go to the next slide. This would be the new facade that would be facing Oakland Road. And you can see that the way we have broken that up with the brickwork, the stucco, the brickwork, a canopy over the center, the roof is broken up by that center section as well. And you can go to the next slide. So this is the, we're gonna call it more the utility side of the building. Now, one thing that does not appear in here is the extensive landscaping that is included in the civil engineering plans. The wall that's more blank on the left side there, that is where the kitchen is. So we're having equipment in there. We have one window in there that will let some natural light in. But for the most part, if you know how a kind of commercial style kitchen works, there's equipment all along both walls.
So that's one of the facades that we have a problem with. So we require facade treatment around all four sides irrespective, listen, we've been doing warehouses here for about four years, so I've heard it all. That wall is gonna need additional treatment. I'm not asking you to bump it in and out. You're still gonna need a waiver, but it is gonna have to have a treatment, like a water table, and there's gonna have to be vertical breaks in the building, whether it's texture or color. I'm not saying the interior functionality of the building's gonna be changed, but the exterior is going to have to comply better with our ordinance, with our requirements than that. And there's other facades as well that are blank similarly. And I, I'm not asking you to do the three, we require a three-foot bump out, right? We actually, if you go out of this building, the Autozone over here has bump outs, they're fake, because it doesn't work for their interior space. So I understand the functionality on what's on the other side of the wall. What I'm telling you is that our requirements are what our requirements are, and there's gonna have to be additional architectural treatment to those walls that are blank to better keep with the spirit of our architectural requirements, as we have required every other user that has come to both this board and the planning board. So it's this facade, and what is that facade? What was that other one?
The east.
The east elevation is very blank as well. And that's gonna have to get some additional treatment. You're still gonna need the waiver, but that is how the board has been handling these facades, because we're not looking to, to interfere with the internal functionality, but the external, the view of the external facade is gonna have to be treated a little bit more.
So any, um, things we can do? Can we modify that to comply with the board planner's recommendations?
I mean, typically what happens is that the board gives me the ability to, to, to work with the applicant during resolution compliance to come up with a plan that we, that is in keeping with the intent of our ordinances.
Okay. So it would be a condition to work in, uh, condition of compliance to come up with a plan.
Correct.
Does agreeable, both the planner and work with the architect?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
Does the applicant agree to that?
Is that, um, is that, can that be done or is it functional?
Uh, can, can it be done? Yes. I mean, there can be some things that are, are changed in these two little areas really, as far as that goes. Um, but you know, I understand the intent of ordinances like this, which we've come across before, generally of one of two purposes. One is if it's in the village center to provide.
That is not how how it works. I'm just gonna interject. Respectfully, no. Not for nothing, no, because you're trying to make it like we're trying to impose something on you that we don't impose on every application here in town, regardless of the function. When I get warehouse users to comply with this requirement, uh, you know, where their functionality is the racking system on the inside, people aren't even on the, on the loading dock side, we're requiring them to comply, and as you also stated, they're small sections, I, I would respectfully require that as a request that the board required as a condition of any approval. There's no building that we have had here in town that hasn't come back to the table with something that is in keeping with the intent, regardless of how de minimis it is.
Sir, is the applicant willing to comply with it?
Again, yes, we will comply and work that. And I appreciate the board planner's concern. I, I would just like, um, Mr. Philippi to finish. Um, and we understand, um, and I've been before how, uh, before how it works and the ordinance and the requirements, that we're seeking these requirements. But I just wanna make sure that we, um, Mr. Philippi can finish as to make sure we can have this functionally done, because I would never wanna promise anything that we can't do. So.
Jen, just those two areas?
From what I can tell, based on the plans that I've reviewed, yes, there's a couple of blank facades that need a little bit of love, and I'll be happy to work with his office to come up with something that is not overly, I, listen, I'm not trying to break the bank here, but something that is overly, that will help to break up that.
Got it.
Blank facade that will keep being keeping with the intent of our ordinance as we have with every other application.
Thank you, Jen.
Just to ask, would that be reasonable? We can work together and try and come up with some type of.
My intention was simply to define what parts of the building we were talking about, because if you read the ordinance from a strict standpoint, it's very prescriptive in the architecture. There is not a lot of leeway in it. It requires certain design elements that are not expressed in the facade of this building.
Which is why I said, you still need the waiver, and we'll work with you to come up with a design that keeps with the intent, but you still need to seek the waiver.
Right. Uh, we would agree. We would agree with that. I mean, it's, we, we just didn't wanna be, have something that's impossible. We work together, then that would be agreeable to the.
Thank you.
I have never had an applicant have to come back here to fight about the architecture.
Got it.
And again, we're talking about two small areas, so hopefully that can be, I believe that can be worked out. Okay. Right. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were, where you were, or if you want.
No, the only other point that I was gonna make is that it is, the other place I've encountered it is in areas where you wanna prevent the warehouse appearance. And so I, I understand that and I respect that, and we certainly don't wanna create anything that looks like a warehouse.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not saying it looks like a warehouse, but I'm saying that we've dealt with warehouses. So I just wanna be clear with the reference.
Yes, yes. And I just wanted to be sure, and, and maybe the, the board planner can,
can also comment. I just wanna review the planner letter that we start with, um, I think it's 4H. Uh, one, I just wanna go through each of the ordinance sections. Uh, we're talking about the architectural articulated base course and cornice, uh, the architectural treatment of the additional and the maintenance building. Can you just describe, I think, talking about the maintenance building to be consistent with the house of worship?
Right. And, and I think we had a conversation about that, right? And we did add a base course around the building, uh, the proposed maintenance building that is seen in the back from this aerial view. Uh, that's the only place that really you can see it from. And we have modified that design to include a brick base and some windows to break that building up. And I thought that was acceptable.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't take exception to the look of the building. I think it looks fantastic. I think there's little tweaks that have to be made. I don't know that we need to belabor the architecture anymore.
Okay.
You do need waiver from this section, which happens very frequently, and the board has accepted, uh, you know, the ability for us to work it out as a resolution compliance item. And then once I sign off on it, then generally we're done with it.
Okay. So, yeah, we would make sure we do that and we can meet those, those sections, uh, requested by the board planner. Um, do you have anything further to add besides your testimony presented?
Well, I guess the one thing that I did want to take the liberty to speak to, and this is with my experience, having designed and planned hundreds of church facilities around the country, and also having spoken and taught at church conferences related to church facility design. We have certain standards that we use for parking that are generally more severe than the ordinances that come into play in most municipalities. Parking, we always based on the worship seating capacity, because that's the driver for the parking. And we recommend for a church that is in multiple services, that their minimum ratio be one parking space for every two seats in worship. So in this situation, 266 spaces would accommodate over 500 people in two services. Because one of the things that we've found is that if people can't park and park conveniently, they will not come. And that the majority of growth that will occur in a church will be for families with young children. So if they cannot park conveniently to be able to get into the building and get their children in, they will not come. That's just the way that it works out. And so in my opinion, having designed as many facilities as I have, I believe that 266 is more than adequate for a worship space with 380 seats in it.
Thank you, Mr. Philippi.
So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Charlie, we're good?
Yeah, the only comment I have is that the roof mounted HAC, though, gonna be on flat roofs and be screened, so they're not.
If you look at the bricked areas with the flat roof.
Yep.
That's what we're planning on concealing, equipment behind there. And then also, uh, for the multipurpose building itself, we're planning to conceal it behind the raised section that's in the center.
Gotcha. That's all I have.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And then our, our last witness is our planner, Alex McLean. And I think we have, uh, in addition to what we have submitted, we have actually handouts, um, just some pictures of the area.
Would you pass them over to?
Uh, I want you to just.
And let's get you sworn in.
And let's get him sworn in.
I'm sorry.
Let's get him sworn in, yes.
Get sworn in.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just, uh, state and spell your name for the record, please.
Yes, Alexander McLean. Uh, last name is M-C-C-L-E-A-N.
Thank you.
And maybe just circulate the handouts first, and then we can start with the testimony.
Yeah, we need to, we need to mark them.
No, we'll just.
Yeah. So the, the thumb drive that you gave us, that was worn new as well, right? Those were exhibits from the, um.
That would be, now, yes, from the architect?
So that, and I think at the prior hearing, you had an A1 and A2.
Yeah, A1 was the, um.
We're just gonna go through, okay.
Sorry, let me just get my notes here. A1 was the engineering plan?
Yeah.
And A2 was?
It was an aerial, I think, at the first year.
Aerial, the aerial.
An aerial, I think, was A1.
The aerial's A1.
Engineering 2, so let's make the thumb drive A3. And this can be.
Hmm?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, whatever.
So start with, start with 28. So 20, so what we're saying is 1 would be 28. We're saying is 2 would be 29. 3 would be 30 and 31. So there was an, 28 was an aerial.
Go through testimony quickly.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Uh, just let me know when we're ready and we'll proceed.
Sir, can we have your planner's credentials, please?
Yes. Um, Mr. McLean, by whom are you employed?
Um, I'm employed by, uh, I'm an associate, I'm a student and associate.
Okay. And are you a licensed, um, planner?
Yes.
Okay.
In the state of New Jersey.
Yes.
Okay. You're also a AICP certified planner?
I am, yes.
Okay. And can you describe your qualifications as such appearing before boards and, um, presenting for applications before boards?
Sure. Uh, yes, I hold a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, and I have testified for boards throughout the state.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, can you just provide a quick summary from a planning perspective as to this application and what the applicant's seeking? Uh, just a short summary on, on that.
Okay, yes. Um, yes, so the applicant, as I understand the project, is to construct a one-story addition to the church, um, construct a one-story maintenance building and with, in addition to related site improvements.
Okay. And what are the, uh, the variances here and zoning considerations? Uh, actually, let me back up. Um, what are the variance here, variances that the applicant is seeking here today?
Uh, yes, so the applicant is seeking, uh, D3 conditional use relief, uh, for the parking, for the parking count, which requires 39 spaces, while, while the applicant's proposing 266. Uh, it is understood the property, the proposed supply, um, uh, is expected to meet actual demand, because the activities of the site, um, site's current use has a non- coincidental peaks, uh, where the current parking requirement under the ordinance is based on all activities in the aggregate. Uh, peak usage, which is the worship, is not changing, since the applicant is not seeking to increase the number of seats in the church from, uh, the 308. Uh, the applicant is also seeking, uh, bulk variance relief, C relief, for detention basin and the front buffer, which is not permitted. Applicant is ensuring that it would be reasonably located in a low, in a naturally low point. We're also seeking bulk variance relief for, um, a monument sign, uh, where four feet is permitted and 40, sorry, four square feet is permitted and 40 square feet is proposed. Uh, the intent is for a clear, safe, and effective means of site identification. Uh, applicant is also seeking design waivers related to landscaping, lighting, location of trees greater than four feet in diameter, uh, sidewalks, onsite tree replacement, articulation, um, and articulation of roofline offsets, uh, among others.
And you reviewed the board planner's, uh, March 8th, 2020, for, um, letter, uh, before his application today?
I guess I reviewed her report.
And can you go over, and I'll let you, um, expand on this, D D, both the positive criteria versus the, a negative criteria of the application?
Right. So, um, I believe that the, the benefits of this application would substantially weigh any detriment, uh, by advancing the goals, uh, established in the town's master, master plan. Uh, the board planner pointed out the preservation of rural and agricultural uses and the preservation of rural character. Uh, yeah, this is, uh, the board planner also identified the, uh, environmental constraints on the site. It's surrounded by, uh, wetlands and wooded area, uh, to the north of the property. Um, as you can see in the exhibits, like, which I didn't get a chance to, uh, go over, um, should we pause to go over or?
Go over, yeah, go over your exhibits. Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, I mean, I guess if we're, is everyone all familiar, I guess, with that, or do we?
No, you, you can just briefly explain. You've handed them out as A31.
Yes.
Go over each page.
All right, so, yeah, I'll just quickly go over it. So, yeah, just for the, for the sake of kind of illustrating what I'm talking about here. Uh, so, uh, the first page is, is just a view of it to the north, uh, looking toward, uh, 195. So you can see the, uh, properties on the, the south side of the property, looking north, uh, just the wooded area, some surrounding areas. You got the residential, um, uses to across Oakland Road. Uh, the second page quickly is looking south. Again, uh, large wooded area, uh, residential uses to the south and to, uh, right there to the west. Uh, again, another aerial image, you can just see again, uh, how kind of, um, yeah, it's a kind of, hidden, uh, the, the, the site because of the, uh, the landscaping in the surrounding area. This is the, the third page on the view, looking northeast. And again, now this is just a sort of aerial view of the front of the property, uh, looking, looking east. Uh, just the last page is just a view of the, uh, view of the existing facility from Oakland Road.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to jump in and help out here, I'd be more than happy to do so. The only reason they're here tonight is because they don't meet the requisite parking. This is a conditional use in the zone. If they met all the conditions, it'd be a permitted use and we'd be at the planning board. They wouldn't even be here. And I think there was enough testimony presented, presented by the traffic engineer, the operations about how the site's functioning, as well as the architect, to demonstrate that, well, yes, the way our ordinance works is that every use within the building is a cumulative parking requirement, but the way that this site operates is that there are all those is a cumulative parking requirement, but the way that this site operates is that there are all those, all those locations are not functioning at the same time. Otherwise, if they complied with the parking, as I said, they would not even be here. So I think the positive of the benefits of the community, the amenities that they're providing to their congregation, outweighed the detriment of, they still have a very significant amount of parking in the 260 range. So, and there's been testimony provided by prior witnesses that would justify that as more than adequate, and that there won't be overflow that falls out onto Oakland Road. So that the benefit of what they're providing here, the improvements that they're making, the architecture, which I think is fantastic, the desirable visual environment, I think all those things, there's, in my opinion, no, it's not no detriment, there's no substantial detriment. I think we've taken great care in the crosswalk, the signage, the queuing, all the other things that we've asked for as part of this application to ensure that it's going to be safely operating. So I think the benefit of the parking deviation outweighs the detriment. The second issue is the signage, right? So four square feet, not very visible. As we've already discussed, the speed on Oakland Road, the geometry of the road, people, especially coming from the south at a high rate of speed over that overpass, I think it's essential that the site be visible for safe circulation and traffic so that people will know in advance, especially if they're new or they're coming for something like some kind of communion or some kind of event where they're not used to coming to the site, they need to be able to see the site in advance of the driveway so that the traffic operates safely. So in my opinion, and I don't necessarily think that the board needs to hear anything more on the waivers, we've gone through all the waivers through the testimony. So, in my professional opinion, I think that the benefit of granting the application and the deviation for the parking and the signage outweighs any detriment. I honestly don't see any detriment. They've agreed to comply with everything we've asked, so in my professional opinion, I think the site has met its burden.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have no further questions, thank you.
Board members, any questions?
Not my first time.
All right, one sec, one sec. All right, so one question at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I don't have a question, I was just going to make a comment. So go ahead.
No, comment.
I actually feel like the building will kind of help slow things down as people come through. So I think that's an added positive to this as well, so, because it does stand out really, really wonderfully.
Okay, so if there's no other questions for the planner, we're going to open it up to public, but I'd like to take five before we do so. Is that okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Eileen?
The board will now take a five-minute break and reconvene at 8:40 PM.
Eileen, we're going to open back up the meeting?
The board will now reconvene.
Sir?
Thank you. Before the board deliberates on this, just based upon some testimony here, I would like, just quickly, the pleasure of the board, there was an issue about, or a question about, if there were multiple services having to come back to the board. I think it would just be helpful if Reverend Assen could just explain the situation of the congregation, the situation, what would entail multiple services, obviously, just to get down to record and answer any of the board's questions, the planner's questions on that, and then we'll just finish from there. So, if I can just have five or 10 minutes to recall Reverend Addison on that?
That's fine, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. So Reverend, you heard the board planner's comments about having multiple services needing to come back from the board, correct? Okay, and you heard the board planner said that you're, in condition, if you're going to do multiple services, the condition will be to come back to the board. Can you just explain to the board so we all understand, what would entail multiple services? Why would you be doing that? And then, how you would be operating that? I think it's a little unclear, just seeing multiple services, like, would that be in the afternoon, a second service? Just clarity, so we can just be on the same page there. Thank you.
Sure. So, prior to COVID, we were operating two worship services on a Sunday. And the first worship service would be from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. And then we would have an hour turnover for people to be able to get their children out of the nursery and Sunday school, get in their cars, depart, and then the second service would be at 11:00 AM. And then new people would come, and then they would finish, and then they would leave. And so, there is an ebb and flow of the way that the church operates. We don't get to decide if the church grows or declines. It's not like a normal business that decides they're going to invest in a new product and they need space for pallets and racks. I don't get to decide that. If church is good and it meets the needs of the community, people come. And if it doesn't, then people don't come. And that's why churches close down, and some churches expand, for whatever reason. And so, what we would like to propose is to be able to have multiple services, if needed, without having to come back to the board, and those services not to exceed the current amount of seats that we have and parking spaces that we have. So I think 380 seats, and then have a turnover period for those people to be able to leave, and then new people to be able to come.
So Reverend?
Yes, sir.
With the improvement that you're looking to accomplish with coffee, kitchen services and so forth, the thought process now changes, right? Because if you have a service, people are going to linger and stay behind, and then you have another one coming in on top of that. And I think that's kind of, you know, what we're thinking with regards to, you know, the ebb and flow of personnel coming and going, right? The egress, ingress. You know, Jen?
I, that testimony does not change my prior opinion. I think you're going to have people lingering with these new amenities. I think if this church was located in a different location, there are some... And keep in mind that this is not the only house of worship that this board has seen over the years. We've seen many in various denominations. We have another one coming up, not that long, that's down in, near Walmart. And so, at the end of the day, currently, the request was, when it was made and it was reviewed, it was one service. I think if they go to two services, they need to come back and explain it. And honestly, I don't think an hour is enough time between services, because I do think you're going to have overlap. And they're here because they don't comply with the parking. So I just feel like, and there's nowhere to overflow, because you're not going to have cars out on Oakland Road. So, you know, if the applicant would like to really explore this, where we have the ability to take a look at maybe an updated traffic study and all those different things for these additional services, when the comment was, we were looking at like 9:15 to 10:15 as a predominant traffic generator for this. If there's another service, that's going to change, and there is the potential for overflow. If the applicant wants to request an adjournment and work this out between now and coming back with Charlie and myself, that's totally fine. But if they want an action tonight, I would recommend one service with a condition. If they want multiple services, they have to come back. I just think there's too many open-ended questions that could be problematic. And it puts a lot of onus on John's office, as opposed to knowing clearly what exactly it is we're approving.
Sir, my concern, if I may, with coming back, are what are the parameters for your approval? And do those parameters, if they are not clear, is it just then become an opinion which then infringes on our religious rights to worship?
So respectfully, it's not random. We have ordinances in place. You're not a permitted use, you're a conditional use. You don't comply with those conditions. So any additional operations need to be evaluated pursuant to those conditions. It may come back, and we say an hour between probably is, in this location, may or may not be enough time. Maybe two hours is the appropriate time. We would have to talk to, to see from the traffic engineer what the traffic conditions on the road are at that location, if the levels of service remain the same, because you do need to demonstrate no negative impact or no substantial negative impact associated with the use variance. In fact, we're not trying to limit their utilization of the property, but we need to make sure that what they're asking for is consistent with our ordinance requirements and that what they've asked for initially in this particular instance, and this is the second time they've been here, is one service. So to change that, or to, you know, and I will tell you, and I think I've sent this offline, you know, I'm involved in litigation in another community for a school who wanted flexibility, and we were in front of the judge, and the judge says, "No, the board has a right to know exactly what it is they're approving." So I'm not saying they won't approve it, but if the parameters change, you come back, we discuss it with the board, and at that point in time, any open conditions or any conditions associated with any approval get evaluated to determine whether or not they've been complied with, and the change of circumstances evaluated consistent with the parameters that are in place at the time of that application. So, you know, it's not random, it's not arbitrary, it's not opinion. There are rules that the town has that we abide by, and so that's what would happen in that instance. It wouldn't be a full-blown review of the site plan. It would be this condition. You know, at some point, you can come back and ask for relief of that condition. It doesn't have to be a full-blown modification of a use variance. There are provisions that could take place, you know, and that, there's an explanation as to what's happening, and then the board gets to evaluate whether or not it's appropriate to remove the condition. That's happened in many instances here as well.
Could you explain to me what that means, relief?
No, no, no. Just give me five. Can I have just two minutes? Hold on, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, sure.
This is the ocean, and then there's undercurrent. We have to... Look, safety and security is the most, right? And that's the issue, because we're adding the amenities. When you add the amenities, typically you have a lunch. Not necessarily. What if you have multiple denomination services? Okay, sir?
Yes, yeah, I did speak with Reverend Assen. We would be willing to accept the conditions of the board planner that if we had to request any additional services, that we would come back to the board with an application for them. So we would be agreeable with the recommendations of the board planner as to service.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any further questions for Reverend here? Okay, you can go back. Thank you.
We're good.
Thank you. I have no further testimony. Thank you.
We want to open it up to public?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open the public.
Take it.
Okay. Eileen?
The board will now be open to the public. If you wish to state something, please come up and state your name and your address. Thank you.
Okay, we don't see anybody coming up. Can we close the public?
Motion to close.
Take it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're closed.
The board will now be closed to the public.
Sir?
Yes.
Summation.
Thank you. Just, it'd be brief. I would just, as the board planner said, presented an application with a lot of different professionals, provided a detailed statement of operations. And as to our one use variance for the parking, although we don't meet the requirement, we've shown through testimony that it's, the operations are not all at the same time, that the parking will not be exceeded, that the positive criteria substantially outweighed the negative criteria. Obviously, we would satisfy all conditions with, if there's any additional services, to come back, hopefully in a quick fashion before the board with additional traffic studies for approval, and also for the signage, that's certainly important for safety issues. Other than that, I think we presented an application that enhances the church, the quality for the congregants, and nice architectural plan, and we just respectfully request that the board grant the applications with any conditions required by the board professionals.
Thank you, sir.
I thank you for your time in the application.
Thank you. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, based on the testimony, and I think it's commendable that we have a church that's doing well, which is a rare sight nowadays, but I'm happy to see it. I think both of you did a very good job explaining what's going on. I agree with the planner. I thought the architectural was very well done, and just a couple tweets to make it, you know, to our liking, which I agree with the planner on. And my biggest concern was the safety. I think it's been addressed in a good manner. We're, I'm satisfied with it. I do think that the governing body should make, here are concerns, that we want to make sure there's adequate signage. And other than that, I wish you all the best, and I make the motion to approve.
I second.
Okay.
I don't think Ms. Scottson's...
I think I am. Yeah, I'm eligible.
Yeah, she's listed.
But there's eight people, so I need seven.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
I'll second. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Eileen Rolke, please.
Mr. Verillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
I would just like to, you know, bring up again, talking about the safety that Mr. Mertens was talking about, having that crosswalk by the driveway as part of this, with the signage, of course, and also with the architect complying with Jen's tweaks, I'd like to vote yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Stan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? And Chairman Sayah?
You know, there's a lot of improvement that's going to go on at this facility. You know, I hope that it's very joyful and bountiful with weddings and other good deeds and services. So I wish you all the best, and I vote yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All the best.
Oh, boy. All right. Eileen, when's the next?
May 13.
May 13. All right, mark your calendars. We got a, we got a, we got a full gendered, don't we?
May 13.
Okay. May have a motion to adjourn.
Now make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I guess I'll second.
All in favor?
You can do it.
Aye.
I'm getting it in there.
Eileen, we are adjourned.
Thank you.